Ms. Shore, our library director. I heard a nice compliment about you. I was sitting with at TML's board meeting with the head of the library association, who happens to be from Bedford, was sitting beside me. And she said, "I gotta tell you, Fort Worth has a winner and hired one of the strongest librarians in the nation," with Manya.
Well, I appreciate that. I do have to tell you, she emailed me to say she was sitting next to you. And I said, "Well, please tell her how great I am."
Ah, it was a setup, huh?
Just a little bit. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. ACMs who never get greeted. My name is Manya Shore. They're not paying attention. Oh, hi. Thank you, Valerie. I appreciate you. My name is Manya Shore, and I'm the Fort Worth Public Library Director. I apologize in advance for my voice. It's been a rough couple of weeks. Today, I come before you to present to you a year's worth of work. And I've only been here a year and some change. So this has really been the bulk of the work that I've done since I've gotten here. We are unveiling to you today our new strategic plan. I want to warn you upfront, I'm going to share a lot of information with you today. We are going to pass something out to you at the end, which has all of the information. So don't worry, you don't need to take notes. We're going to give it all to you at the end. I also want to let you know that this plan and where this plan is telling us we need to get to is extremely ambitious. We're proud, we're excited, but we have a lot of work to do. So before we dig into the plan, I'd like to spend a couple of minutes talking about how we got to where we are today. One of the things that I knew even before I accepted the job here in Fort Worth was that one of the first things I was going to have to do was to work on a new strategic plan. The last time the library did any work in this area was with the 2020 Vision Plan, which some of you might remember. It was released in 2011. The 2020 Vision was more of a facilities plan. It gave guidance to where buildings should be, what renovations should happen, which neighborhoods should have libraries, drive time, that sort of thing. It was less a guiding document around programs and services. To find that, you have to go all the way back to the Long Range Services Plan, which was released in 2004. Now, the city's changed just a little bit since 2004. So after reading the 2020 Vision, I'm not sure I could tell you what was important to us at the Fort Worth Public Library. And I'll tell you, if the library director can't tell you what's important, the staff wouldn't be able to tell you what's important, the community won't be able to tell you what's important, and you wouldn't be able to tell what's important to us, which is why it was so critical that we work on a new strategic plan. It's important for us to give guidance because we are an institution that when we don't frame who we are in the modern world, people default to nostalgia about us, right? What libraries were like when they were a child? What libraries were like when they took their children or their grandchildren to the library? And not necessarily the dynamic and thriving institutions that we are today. So we engaged with a distinguished library consultant named Margaret Sullivan and have been working on the plan since last April. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Paul Orr, sitting over here. He was our main contact on this strategic plan. He's a library employee. And as the mayor likes to say, he did a yeoman's job working on this plan, as well as our two assistant directors, Marilyn Marvin and Michelle Gorman. Now, before I plunge into the plan, I'd like to share a couple of facts about the modern American public library, lest you are one of those people who thinks that we are quiet book places. A 2018 American Library Association survey found that the number-one generation using libraries, and you all should know this because I told this all to you when I met with you when I first got here, are, of course, the millennials. But I'll bet everyone in the audience doesn't know that because most people think that we get mostly senior citizens in our institutions. But if you think about this, it makes sense because millennials are the ones having kids. They're probably older than you think, right? The oldest millennials in their mid-30s. They're also the generation with the lowest disposable income. And frankly, although many of them live a lot of their life here, they still hunger for in-person communal spaces. Now, even though we don't have 100% usage, we enjoy widespread support. Any city government or elected official who has tried to close a library can attest to this. This is when people come out of the woodwork, and I know this has happened here in Fort Worth, right? Even people who don't use us see us as a public, common good that's important for other people to have. So that means, in other words, that we have a strong sense of community pride in an institution like a public library. We belong to the people after all. But there is no doubt that use has been changing, not just with the Internet, but across the country. Well, Book Checkout is still our number-one brand and our number-one service offering. Libraries are increasingly seen as dynamic community hubs for human connection and lifelong learning. That American Library Association survey, 43% of people describe the library as a place that offers activities and entertainment you can't find anywhere else in the community. And 42% feel that the library helps provide people with skills for the workplace. Both of these numbers, incidentally, are up from the last time they did this survey in 2008. So where's the Fort Worth Public Library? Well, these are our fiscal year 2017 numbers. Now, here's the thing that public libraries enjoy whenever they come up in front of bodies like yours. We produce really big numbers that look really impressive. So I could tell you that in fiscal year '17, under library visits, we had more visitors to the Fort Worth Public Library than attended all Dallas Cowboys games, both home and away. I'm so sorry that Councilmember Byrd has stepped out because I could also tell you that between 600 and 800 people visit the Southwest Regional Library every single day. And I could tell Councilmember Zeta that 1,000 people visit the Central Library every single day. So I could overwhelm you with really big numbers and make you think certain things. But it's really important that we talk about the truth today. And the truth is, is when we pull the lens back and we compare ourselves to peer libraries in Texas and across the country, we realize that we have some work to do. I recognize this is a large chart, and I've sat in the audience a lot and thought, "I can't read that chart," so I apologize to all of you. A couple of things I want to call your attention to. One is that peer libraries is an art, not a science. So for this exercise, we decided to choose libraries that have similar population sizes. And also, we have patrons that interact with their cities in similar ways, right? So we didn't choose dense urban areas where people typically get around through public transportation or walking. So let me start with the good news. We call your attention to the write-to columns. Per capita operating expenditures, we're doing pretty well. $23.27 per person that we spend on our community is not bad compared to our peer libraries. We're spending at a pretty good rate. And our per capita checkout at 5.1 items per person is also pretty good when you look at where we land everywhere else. Don't let Portland, Oregon throw you off. They are an anomaly in this country. They have incredible use of their libraries. But with everyone else, we're doing pretty well. We are underutilized, however, by our community. We have about 14% of our population has an active library card with the library system. So with this 5.1 being as high as it is, that tells me that although very few people are using the Fort Worth Public Library, those that do use us really, really love us and use us. And we just need to work on increasing that usage. This also means to me, so here's the good news, this also means to me that we have the budget we need right now to improve and to put us in the game. We don't necessarily have enough to get us up to Portland, Oregon standards and win the game, but we have what we need to get started. All of that said, we really do fall down quite seriously when it comes to visits, programs, program attendance, and checkout. Let me highlight two of the cities on this chart. It's a little easier to read. Starting with Charlotte, North Carolina, on the bottom. They serve a similar population size and have only three more branches than we do. So they're a pretty good comparison for us. However, if you notice, they checked out about 2 million more books and materials than we did in one year. They had more than double the number of visitors. They offered six times the number of programs, and they attracted six times the number of attendees to those programs. Or Gwinnett County, which is a county outside of Atlanta, Georgia. They're also a pretty good peer for this, even though they're a county system. And notice, they have a smaller budget than we do, but they still eclipse us on checkouts by over half a million, double us in visits, double the number of programs, and have six times more people attending their programs. And please, notice the active cardholder rate. Now, when I got here, we were at 13. We're now at 14, so I'll take that percentage, but it still pales in comparison with the 42% in Gwinnett and the 36% in Charlotte. So with the 20 years that I've spent in public libraries, I can tell you, we have a long way to go, and we need to grow this system. So as we went through the strategic planning process, the number-one question we asked ourselves was, "Why isn't Fort Worth using their library?" So it took us some time to answer this question. Using our consultant, we started with our staff with an online survey. We kicked off at our annual staff day, and we utilized a group of 30 staff who spent over 500 hours, working very hard and using their brains to figure out how we can improve our library system. With the community, we offered four meetings across the city. We had an online survey on our website for months, and we passed out a paper survey at our highest-attended program, Third Thursday Jazz. Lastly, we engaged with city leaders, nonprofit leaders, social service agencies, and other city departments to ask them their thoughts, and we conducted a focus group with the city manager and the ACMs. So with all of that in mind, I'd like to present to you the brand-new mission of the Fort Worth Public Library. This is our purpose going forward: building a community of learners, dreamers, and doers. I believe this mission represents what I see as the best of Fort Worth. Hard-working people who are self-sufficient, long-range planners, and deeply, deeply committed to their city. I've never seen such commitment to a city as I have seen here. And our vision, or who we want to be, is your community gathering place for learning, self-discovery, shared experiences, and personal growth. We've also created our own set of values, not to distance ourselves from the city values, but to enhance them and to make them more meaningful for our staff and our community. Okay, so now let's get into the meat of the plan. And this is where we're going to pass something out that has all of this on it. And I'm going to walk you through each one of these strategic focus areas over the next few slides. So on every side, starting with customer engagement, on the left-hand side, you're going to see the identified needs. This is what we heard from our community and our stakeholders as we went through the process. Either things they feel like they need from the city, or they need specifically from the library, and I don't mean city government, but just the city as a whole, or from the library. And then on the right-hand side are our goals, what we want to work towards and how we're going to get there. So starting with engaging our customers, because that's always where we have to start. We have low usage, but I really believe that we've artificially depressed our usage based on some operational choices we've made over the past decade. Some of it because of budget cuts, and that's completely understandable, but it's time to right-size those choices. So if you've tried to go to a library on either a Thursday or a Friday lately, you may have noticed that half of them are closed, either one or the other day. We have very limited and confusing hours. People are frustrated by that. We need to expand our hours. We need to look at that very carefully. I no longer want to get a text from my husband on a Friday saying, "Why can't I go to Seminary South?" Which I get on an almost weekly basis. We have an extremely punitive fine and fee schedule, and this is something we're going to come back to you in 2019 and talk to you about. And we're neglecting a large part of our population. You know, our mission is to serve all residents of Fort Worth of any age, but we've really shifted our focus quite dramatically to children. We need to right-size that. Our mission is also to serve adults and to serve seniors, and so we need to look more at that. And those changes, those things that we're going to work on over the next couple of years, those are going to bring our numbers up. Because as a voluntary agency, the more difficult we make it for people to use us, the more they just simply won't. Our commitment to arts and culture is twofold. The first one, many of you know, in the basement of the Central Library, we have our genealogy, archives, and local history department. This is our "we need to get history out of the basement" moment. There's so much opportunity here. One of the things we heard as we engaged with our community is a lot, especially with the long-term Fort Worthians, that there is a lot of concerns around rapid city growth, an appreciation for the growth, but also a lot of concern and a lot of fear around the growth. This is not something new to rapidly growing cities across the country, and there's a role for the library here. I'll give you an example from when I was in DC, which is, as you know, a very rapidly changing area with a lot of gentrification and some of the same rapid city growth fears. The library there, their archives department, would go around to different neighborhoods and sponsor a program called Know Your Neighborhood. As a part of that, they would educate new residents on the history of that neighborhood, on the history of their particular house. What did this neighborhood look like when your house was built? Who built it? There's so many resources in the municipal archives, from planning and development and other city departments, that we have. We are the municipal archives for the city. And that stuff, for the most part, is just sitting there. I think there's a real opportunity here to help bridge that gap between some of the new folks and the long-term folks. We also have an incredibly robust genealogy department that we can do a better job of getting out across the system. In many cities, the library is a center of arts and culture. We do some of this now with our participation in Clyburn in the community, our Third Thursday Jazz program, the symphony comes, but most of this happens at central space, being the reason given. But I like to say that our services can expand or contract based on how much space we have. And we need to figure out how to bring these kind of resources out into the branches and across the city. This focus area won't surprise anyone. This is our bread and butter, right? Books and reading. However, there's a real opportunity here that I think we're currently missing. It will surprise no one to know that I am a reader. I love reading. I'm a nonfiction reader, so take that if you thought I read cozy mysteries. I am a nonfiction reader, and one of the things that I love to do is to read a great book and then get together with other people and talk about that book, listen to an author speak about a particular book. And it took me a while to notice after I moved here, I couldn't find anywhere to do that. Now, I'm not saying individual one-off opportunities don't exist at TCU or at the Fort Worth Club or at TCC, but there's no one place in Fort Worth where lovers of books and reading can go and engage in that passion. We want to become the literary hub of Fort Worth. This is probably one of our most ambitious dreams as a part of this plan. Many libraries, and I'm just going to scroll through. These are pictures from author events at libraries across the country. This is not a new role for public libraries to play. We just haven't chosen to do it here. We don't have the connections with the publishers that we should have, and so we're missing many opportunities. And I'll tell you, we're missing them a lot to Dallas. Susan Orlean, who's a very well-known author, she wrote The Orchid Thief, probably some of you in here have read it. She just released a book called The Library Book. It's a history of the Los Angeles Public Library and Fire they had there. She kicked off her book tour at the Los Angeles Public Library and has been touring around with that book ever since. She was in the Metroplex last month. She was at North Richland Hills Library, and she was at the Plano Library. We had no idea she was even in the area. We are not on the radar. That's a problem for me. When Reed Fort Worth talks about turning kids from reading to learn to learning to read, this is the end result that we want. We want them to have a place to go to engage with their love of reading. We've already started this effort as best that we can now. Last week, we kicked off the book tour for legendary reporter Bobby Weigandt. We had about 50 people. It was a Tuesday night, or I'm sure you all would have been there. We had about 50 people at the Central Library. To me, this is a perfect place for us to be. The book was published by TCU Press. It's about a Texas reporter, Texas history, and a Texas woman. This is where we need to be living more. Education and growth is where you will find a lot of what you probably already associate public libraries with: out-of-school-time classes for adults and seniors and kids, a focus on early education. So this includes after-school, and these are all pictures from Fort Worth Public Library events, after-school programming, ESL and citizenship classes, family-centered programming, health and wellness, technology help, the summer reading program, and of course, support for the 100 by 25 initiative. I love that picture. We just need to do a lot more of this. We need to do it with intentionality and with expectation that it is system-wide. Right now, it's pretty catch-as-catch-can if there's interest in a particular location. So one of the reasons that Michelle is here and is going to be so helpful is we're going to set some expectations around programming and outreach and the work that we do in our locations. So I'm a little disappointed that I don't think Robert Sterns is here because, I mean, oh, he is here! I stole from Robert's plan. This is a direct lift from the Economic Development Strategic Plan, obviously. I did this because I wanted to demonstrate how serious the library is about not only supporting the city's work in this area, but also to prove what I already know, that libraries help fuel economic development in a myriad of ways. I'm going to talk to you about a couple of them because it's sometimes a winding road to get you there instead of a direct, it directs us some of our other partner departments. So first, because no one thinks of us as government. It's true. I don't know how we got so lucky, but no one thinks of us as government, and that means we are the warm and fuzzy and friendly arm of government, and we're a trusted institution. So there's a lot of opportunity to work with us to, I've been saying this to Maddie, we want to be the good-news engine of the city, right? So when it comes to economic development, we have the Business Resource Center and everything that comes with the good work that they're doing there. But I know that we can bring that help across the city. I think not of the app developer who has the money to rent a space at WeWork. I think instead of the guy who lives down the street from me, and this is a real guy, who owns a lawn care business. It's just him and a couple of guys and the lawnmower in the back of his truck. You know, it's not as easy as just going around and sticking a flyer on people's homes. There's permits, there's small-business loans, there's taxes to be paid, there's payroll. There's all of these things that I almost guarantee my neighbor knows nothing about. And because we are a trusted institution and because we are warm and fuzzy, we can help support that kind of entrepreneurship. A recent article in the Denver Post highlighted millennials using the public library, remember they use us quite a bit, and some unexpected ways. And I'm not suggesting we need to do any of these, but I think these are interesting. There's opportunity for free coworking spaces where, as a give-back, the entrepreneur offers free classes in their area of expertise. In our maker labs, which we have in various locations, entrepreneurs can print prototypes that can be used for business loan competitions. And this guy, whose name is Matthew Cruz, he recorded and mixed his latest album at the Denver Public Library. Again, I'm not suggesting we need a music lab, although if anyone's interested in funding that, talk to me after. But my point is that there's an untapped market of creatives in our community who can find resources at the public library. So the other place I want to be is literally part of vibrant communities. I love the city's commitment to developing walkable neighborhoods. I think that is key, and I've lived in those kind of neighborhoods everywhere I've lived across this country. But what I can tell you is that people who live in those communities, they don't want just retail, they don't want just businesses, they want civic space. You know they want parks, you know they want community centers. I'm telling you, they also want libraries. And remember earlier when I said our service model can expand or contract based on how much space we're given? We don't need a lot. There's a lot of opportunity, as we work on a facilities master plan this year, to talk about flexible and coworking spaces as we move forward. I do not believe we need to be building big, standalone libraries. Let me show you an example that I think could be a model for us. So this is Bookmarks. I don't know if anyone's been there, but this is a branch of the Dallas Public Library. It's inside the North Park Mall. It's a children's library, and it's been there for a decade. Now, I don't know anything about the lease agreement, but I am sure they are getting a deal on this. It's a small space, just a regular old retail space, but it doesn't matter because the mall allows, there, the mall allows the library to offer their programs in the main part of the mall. So there's a couple of things you might not know about libraries. One is that homes located near libraries have a higher property value, and that libraries offer what is called a halo effect to retail. People want to go to libraries, and then they stay to shop. So this is all business for the mall. This is a great model for us here in Fort Worth. The other thing I'm interested in are public-private partnership opportunities. I'm going to show you an example from DC. This was the old West End branch. West End neighborhood is where George Washington University is. This is the original 1960s building. When the city decided that there should be a new library on this site, rather than tearing it down and building one new, instead, the city sold this land to a private developer for a mixed-use development, except for the 20,000 square feet that remained a public library and another X amount of square feet for a fire station. The deal, however, that the city made with the developer is that no condo could be sold until the library opened, which prioritized the opening of the civic space. This is what it looked like then. This is what it looks like now. That green door that you see, that's the entrance to the library. And next to it, on the corner, is a café. This picture is standing inside the café, looking all the way through to the library. There's no door. It's an open space in between the café and the library. This is what integration between public and private space looks like. I got so excited, I forgot to flip my pages. So lastly, I have to tell you that we are excited. We are really, really excited about this plan, and the staff are excited for this change. But we have a lot of work to do to get us ready, if you think about where we are now and where I'm talking about us getting to. We need to create a new, higher orientation. We need to do employee empowerment. We need to teach our staff what it means to work in a modern public library, ongoing development, and we need to change up some of our organizational structure. There is change coming our way. There's also a lot of work to be done around private fundraising and around partnerships. We need to do a lot more of both of those things. In other words, we need time. And well, this is a three-year plan. I don't anticipate starting over in two years. I'm confident that we will build on what we have here because what we have here is extremely ambitious. So the next step for us is to develop annual goals, measurements, and outcomes. We will present a completed plan to you, and I'm hoping that you will adopt it in January and give us your support. Now, the good news is, is that your representatives on the library advisory Now, the good news is, is that your representatives on the library advisory board last week voted unanimously to support the plan. In addition, the Library Foundation, and I thank Leslie Oliver from the Library Foundation for being here today, her board also voted in support of this plan. Our stakeholders are extremely excited about the future that is to come for the Fort Worth Public Library. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Manya. Questions? Dennis?
I think that your numbers are going to be boosted once we get a library in District 7. We haven't had one. We still don't have one. And someday, they tell me it'll be built, but I'm not, I'm not real optimistic about that. But I think that there's another ancillary. You know, District 7, at least above 820, and it's more than just District 7, it's, it's Cary's district also, that, and Carlos's, that above 820, there's such a disparate geographic range up there, that I think that there's room for not only the library that we're building on Golden Triangle, but I think that we could probably talk Fine Line, Bill Baker, into putting something, and I'm talking to him about another one, and I'm going to invite you to go with me up there and, and discuss that. And I think it's next week, but we'll, we'll work that out.
I will be there.
Okay. To, to, to put something in the, in the mall up there where Buc-Ee's is.
Great.
So.
It's great.
Let's, let's chat about that. I, I think there's some room for that, both of those things that are five miles apart.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. I mean, this is one of the downsides of being new. I do not have those connections for this kind of work, which is one... Golden Triangle.
You better watch out who you hang out with.
I have been to Buc-Ee's, of course. We are behind when it comes to the number of libraries that we need. One of the things I've said to Jay is we could easily have 10 additional locations. We just have not kept up with the, the growth, the landmass growth of this city. Most of our branches are in the, the central, or in the Loop. So we could easily sit here and name probably 10 different locations that could use a civic space like a library.
Gina?
We have been so well-informed today by lengthy and detailed staff reports. I really wasn't going to say anything. But I do need to ask you about my district in terms of District 5. Thank you for bringing the hotspots. You know, you already know that that, that's a great success. My question, since I only have one library that's too small, too cramped all the time, need more room, need more books, need more people, what are you going to do about that? And the other, other question, realistically, and I know you don't want any more freestanding, but expansion would be something to think about. I have two community centers, Handley Meadowbrook Rec. Center and Eugene McCray Rec. Center. Both were scheduled to have been open by the end of this year. That's not going to happen, and that's not your fault. But are you looking at expanding your services there, in terms of kiosk or storytelling? You know, Black History Month in, in February is always a great time for storytellers. They call them "Grios" in, in the African culture. But you know, just how, how can you leverage those opportunities since they're going to be so big if and when they ever reopen?
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Councilmember, especially about the hotspots. I'll tell you, we're back at over 300 holds. We just cannot keep up with the demand for those. So those, those libraries that I referenced inside the Loop, most of them are old. They're original 1960s buildings. And I, I just want to be clear, I don't object to building standalone libraries. I just am afraid that doing something major like that every four years as a part of the bond isn't fast enough. So I'm really interested in finding opportunities where we can occupy spaces a little faster. This facilities master plan is going to tell us what we need, what our community needs. And I would not be surprised if it said something like, "East Berry is not big enough and needs a community meeting room." Same thing with Seminary South, same thing with, with, with a lot of our smaller locations. The two community centers, I will sit down with Richard. It's something we've talked about quite a bit, this idea of co-locating. We're both really invested in it. I've also, is Chief Davis still here? He and I are interested in, in co-locating. I mean, I'm, I am out there talking about the co-location idea. I sometimes feel like I got here a few years too late for some of these projects. But, but at the same time, I mean, Jay and I are talking about this constantly, like, where's the room? Where's the room now with some of these existing, with some of these existing projects to sort of get our foot in the door? As for your last question about storytelling, so in library land, we call that something called outreach, which is delivering our services outside of our building. We don't do nearly enough of that right now. And that's something that we're taking on over the next few years, is, is saying to our staff, "These are your schools, these are your daycares, these are your senior centers. The expectation is that you visit them X number of times a year," and really institutionalizing that. Because like I mentioned, right now, it's kind of catch-as-catch-can, so we need to set expectations. So yes, I'm sure Michelle took down the name of those community centers, and we will absolutely serve, serve them with outreach programming.
And I forgot to mention one thing my mom told me. The retired teachers of, of Fort Worth would be a real good group to plug into for citizen volunteers.
Perfect. I don't know them. I will, I will, if you could make an introduction.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Big group. John Guss?
Manya, great presentation. I think you've, what I heard is that programs are equally or more important than facilities. And what you may want to do is, now that you've got your draft or your, your plan ready to go, is visit with each of us briefly.
I will.
And, you know, I've got a couple of places I could offer in mixed-use developments that have been offered in the past and not really taken advantage of, but just some ideas for you to look at.
I would love that. Thank you.
Congratulations. Great plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that.